You're listening to Let Me Tell You Why You're Wrong, all on Georgia Radio Network.
Welcome to episode 36 of the Let Me Tell You Why You're Wrong podcast. With me as always, or again, Matt Lowe.
How's it going?
And the brains of the operation, Jessica Salagi.
Hello.
How's everyone's week?
Straight from the outline.
Straight from the outline.
My week is good. I'm also feeling much better than I was last week.
Yeah, no one said they missed you, but...
Nah, they didn't.
Well, let's see, in two weeks, we've had floods and some sort of sinus VD that you had going on that kept you from talking.
Right. Now, I don't know what it is, the first, I think the first kind of cold snap of the year triggers the elm tree to do its thing. And the elm tree and my sinuses are at odds, so...
Well, we're praying for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna put a jar at all the convenience stores for Matt's sinuses. Well, Georgia prosecutors tell Channel 2 Action News, they can now solve more than 100 violent crimes with DNA evidence, but they may not be able to get justice.
I think it's interesting that, first of all, district attorneys are advocating for, quote, "justice," but this is an interesting case, or an interesting thing, because it has to do with the First Offender Act in Georgia, which is part of justice reform. Everybody know what First Offender Act is?
I've heard of it, I've never had to use it.
Yeah, you get a mulligan.
Right. I mean, you get like a reduced sentence in a sense where, and it's if you do like probationary activities while, instead of going through trial. Now, this, what I find interesting is, you know, they take your DNA when you go into prison, but because these first-time offenders aren't going to prison, they're not cross-checking the DNA to see if they're connected to other crimes. And so now these prosecutors are saying justice isn't being served, and more than 100 violent crimes may never get justice.
Well, see, you know, I watched that, and what happened was there was 100, or there was some DNA that was taken and accidentally thrown into the system, and it triggered matches in those various cases. So like, they know, they're like, hey, there's, whatever it was, I think the ones that stood out to me were 14 sexual assaults and one rape. Right? So there's DNA logged in this case, and now there's a match.
Right.
On those, from the first offender, and they may not be able to prosecute them. And I don't, man, I don't know how I feel about that.
Well, I know how I feel about changing it. I mean, if they wanna, I guess that's up to our lawmakers, and they're gonna do no matter what, regardless of what the people want. But my thing is, is what's going to happen now that they have the matches, if they change or repeal the act, or do something to alter it? And, I mean, you're not supposed to make laws to target these types of things and to go backwards like this. So, I mean, what happens if they change it? That's what I'm concerned about.
Right.
Well, it'd be a whole lot easier to prosecute people if we all got rid of all our walls, put glass up everywhere, and allowed the state to follow us at every step. Be a lot easier if we just opened all our bank records, all of our files to the government, and go ahead and let those prosecutors pour through everything and double-check and see what laws we may have broken.
That's not what the Patriot Act did?
Very close, Matthew.
Not all of our walls are clear yet, but they do have infrared.
Right.
They do, and it is absolutely Orwellian.
But I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were done, go ahead.
As you say, the Fourth Amendment doesn't mean anything anymore. They've taken the reasonable label and just applied it to everything that the government wants.
Well, you know, a lot of the controversy with the 23andMe and Ancestry stuff, where you're sending off your DNA to these private companies and you're releasing them to have it, and there's all these concerns that there's no HIPAA protections and all of that. I totally foresee a day where there's subpoenas to those companies for DNA that they've collected. And I guess I, from the perspective of the prosecutors, I'm wondering how much of it was actually like a trigger, a computer trigger, where they just happened to match all these cases? I mean, that just sounds odd to me.
Well, as far as the 23andMe and that kind of stuff, I think that there's a lot of that that's governed by state law, because I've read stories where I think some states just require these companies to upload it to their, to their thing, and you give consent when you send it off. And they've solved cases already because of the various, you know, ancestry.coms.
What do you think about that?
I mean, you know what? If you didn't, if, you know, if you didn't read the fine print in your paperwork before you sent it off.
So, I've not had any of the, like, trying to find out where your family's from, although my one brother in California did, and he found out he's 1% West African. And he's like, can you get yours done? Because I want to know if it came from dad's side or his mom's? And I'm like, no, I'm not getting it done. But I did have to have like a partial test done, dealing with like, to see about treatment of an issue that I was having. And they test like specific medications that your body can respond to. And I'll tell you, like, the fine print is not, there's not any fine print, like, it's like a one-page sheet. And you're just, I don't think it's clear in the paperwork that you're signing over for, like, that anyone could have it. It was more like, hey, you're giving this to us, we'll do whatever we want with it. And I think there's gonna be lawsuits over that at some point, but...
Right.
There may be. Look, if there's cause for a warrant, and they want to contact one of these companies, hey, listen, we have someone in mind, and you go to a judge and say, this is our evidence, fine, that there's a due process for that, but to just scan DNA, man, it's, you know, I feel, it feels like statism. And Matt, your DNA and my DNA are on file with the federal government.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, I don't, I don't worry about if, you know, Core Blood Registry, or 23andMe, or whoever has DNA, because mine's on file from the military, and I know Dave's was too, so...
So, when you, if you were to commit a crime and there was DNA, would, is that a database that is scanned? Or is it just, I mean, where yours is?
It's a database, it's a scannable database.
So, when somebody commits, when they have DNA from a crime, they check the military database as well?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, because it's probably, military database is probably one of the largest DNA databases.
Sure.
Around.
Sure.
Just because, I mean, you think about it, man, they probably have, they don't have my kids because I wasn't married it in, but they're gonna have spouses and dependents.
I just, no, go ahead.
It's for the children.
Right.
I just, this is just concerning to me from a standpoint of what do you do? Because when given the opportunity, the state is always going to choose prosecution and crackdown. And no, you don't want people just get away with rapes, but, I mean, think about the trial time that these people could spend. If they go through it and then there's a challenge because of how the match was made, I mean, just tax dollars and time and resources, it sounds like a nightmare.
Right. Well, that's what the report all that was saying was, they may not go after it because they know that they would lose that challenge.
Well, you're never gonna get...
Like, he specifically said, "fruit of the poison tree."
Right.
Right. And you never get the manure back in the horse at this point. It's out there. If you've taken the, if you've taken the DNA test, it's out there, it's going to be searchable. That's just the way it is. I actually did one of those DNA tests and found out that I am white. I come from where white people are made, like Scandinavia and Britain. Like, I thought it'd be cool to have Native American, nope.
You and Elizabeth?
Yeah, yeah.
My sister had it done, so it's, I mean, I would assume, since we share parents, that we're pretty much the same. And I know that y'all will find this shocking, that we are, you know, mostly English, or mostly Irish with a fair amount of English. I had, there was .04% Sub-Saharan African in my sister's DNA.
Sometimes, so when my brother came back and said that he was 1% West African, I went, and then I saw some story recently, when the Elizabeth Warren stuff was coming out, where someone was talking about theirs as well. And I was just thinking like, what if they just throw like a random thing in there to make you be like, ah, I'm diverse? But really, we're all just like legitimately European.
Right.
I mean, I don't know.
And there was a Great South Park on it, if you look it up on 23andMe, it's how much percent victim you are. And it's, if you, if you look for it on YouTube, it is both, you know, they're a great funhouse mirror to turn on society, but it really was, what percent victim are you?
That's funny.
Speaking of victims, where does Georgia rank on the individual tax burden? In a view of all 50 states, number one being the least burdensome on its citizens, and since there's two tied for number one at zero, and 49 being the worst, Georgia ranks 38th.
Um...
Is it 38?
What, what are you looking at? Because I had New Jersey as 50.
I've got the Foundation for Economic Education.
Yeah.
The top link on it. If you scroll down to the map.
Yeah, it says New Jersey's number 50.
Yep. New Jersey, California, New York, Connecticut, Arkansas, Iowa, Louisiana, Minnesota, Ohio, and Vermont.
They include DC.
Ah.
Were the worst.
Gotcha.
Right, they include DC at 45.
Interesting.
And, and you would think that, oh, well, we pay our taxes on the income, it must be lighter elsewhere. Corporate tax rank 8 in Georgia. Sales tax, 29th. Property tax, 24th. Unemployment insurance tax rate, 38th. It seems, it seems like all those folks in the legislature with Rs after the name sure do enjoy taxing us, Jessica.
Well, hell yes, they do. But what I thought was interesting from the article, it said that states that score well on the index's individual income tax component usually have a flat low rate with few deductions and exemptions, which totally reiterates the libertarian perspective that a confusing tax system with all these special, you know, notations around it is a broken system. Because the ones that, the best, like up in South Dakota, you know, they have more equitable laws.
And Matt, have you ever been to Florida?
Uh, yes, I have.
Uh, do they have roads there?
They do.
Well, that's amazing, because they rank ahead of Georgia in every area, being number one in individual tax rate, six on corporate, 22 on sales tax, 11 on property tax, and two on unemployment insurance tax rank.
Well, and you know what's really interesting is that Florida, South Dakota, and Wyoming are all ranked number one. But I would bet, you know, a little bit of my money on the fact that Florida offers more services and probably a higher quality of service than Wyoming and South Dakota, yet they have the same ranking. Which I find interesting.
Well, Florida has a tax that's not in there, and that's gonna be the occupancy tax with the hotels. Disney drives a lot of that state. Disney and sugar.
Yeah, but California has Disney, and look at what's happened to them. California has the original legit Disney.
They do, and the real jaws at their Universal Studios.
I can't speak to it. California is one of the few states I've never been to.
They do do some things right. I mean, I was born there.
And we forgive them for that.
Right. They promptly booted you out.
You know, and I really find it, I won't say interesting, but disturbing that our legislators came home patting themselves on the back for a half of 1% on our income tax cut.
Right.
Ooh, I have an idea. How about on the next show, we do, you know how on the radio in the morning, they'll like call someone and prank them? Let's call the legislators and ask them if they read this article, and if they knew about our poor standing, and see what they say. Let's just go down the list, see who's available at 8 o'clock at night when we're recording this.
There goes any access we had to any legislator. My number's now blocked from anybody who's a lawmaker out here.
I mean, I won't name names, but maybe you should...
All of them?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, they slipped through the largest tax increase at the time. Of course, for the roads, and I don't know how much time you've spent on Georgia roads, but they suck.
They're even worse down here.
I'm sure.
Some of them are even dirt.
Well, there's nothing wrong with a dirt road.
No, but I mean, what are we getting taxed for?
Oh, to, to give us our hot lanes up in Atlanta.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're getting taxed to pay for our lanes.
That's exactly right.
Well, they push that tax through.
Stupid-ass reversible lane that they've got going through there now.
Yeah, man.
Oh, my God.
The rumor was, Deal was furious when the voters of the state did not renew the Georgia 400 tax. And you can tell his...
A toll?
Yes. And you can really tell how much they care about carpooling and the environment. They're like, uh, we're gonna have a carpool lane. Nah, you know what? Just pay us by the mile.
Right.
So, going back to this article, because there was one other comment that I wanted to make about the state rankings. You know, New Jersey's almost, or they are last, I guess. But in the article, it noted that they had a hedge fund manager who left and took his business to Florida. And when they were in, you know, New Jersey has some financial problems, and amid their fiscal crisis, the relocation of just that one guy like sent them back into a spiral down the drain, because that's how badly their tax system was operating. So they just raised taxes again to try to make up for what they lost when he left.
Wow.
Yeah, isn't that crazy?
I want to know who that guy was.
His name is David Tepper.
I think calling the people up there in Jersey would be like, told you.
Right.
Take my ball and go somewhere else.
And Jersey's the scitest of my backyard. I mean, it's, you would think a smaller state, I guess you need higher rates with small, with fewer population, but they're pretty well populated.
Right.
And again, remember, a lot of this tax structure came about with Chris Christie, a guy with, again, an R after his name as governor.
Allegedly.
Allegedly.
He's allegedly a Republican. We cannot confirm.
Yeah, I mean, you don't want to call anybody names, but Rhino Bastard comes to mind.
Right.
He sucks.
As we touched on last week, when, let's go ahead and remind people that these are our opinions and not necessarily those of Alon Georgia. So, when we can get sued for our opinion piece.
Right. Gosh, I'm gonna have to have one hell of a GoFundMe someday. All right.
Georgia mayor plans to round up sex offenders on Halloween and house them at City Hall.
I'm so excited to talk about this.
I guess we know where the party will be.
Right? Okay, so, I don't understand, so what's interesting about this article is that over the week, beginning October 24th, like, it's been on every news outlet. You Google Halloween roundup of sex offenders, and Grove Town near Augusta is the only one that's coming up. And why I find that so interesting is because I was at a county commission meeting in September in Evans County, and they voted then to have the sex offenders report to the courthouse and lock them in for like the entire night. And I was like, huh, well, that's interesting. But they said they did it every year, and that's how it's always been done. And so I just kind of let it go, because I had some other stuff going on with the Evans County School Board, because they're the most corrupt entity in the county, so I just tried to, you know, pick my battles. But anyway, looking at you, Marty Waters, the commissioners just kind of, it was like nonchalant. The city, the county attorney didn't say anything. And if you read this article, which I'm sure Dave's going to go over the highlights of it, there's attorneys who say that if you're a convicted sex offender and you're on the registry, but you're not on probation, like, you can't be forced to come in. So, I'm excited to talk about this.
You know, this is something, like, I've heard of it before, Bartow County, to my north, they do it. The, all the people on their list, they come hang out, watch TV up at the jail.
Now, do they come voluntarily? Is there a punishment?
It is, my understanding that it is voluntary, but it's kind of one of those things where it's kind of like, you know, like where your employer is like, hey, this is voluntary training that you're gonna do on my time. You know what I mean?
Right.
So, it's, like, it's, from what I understand, it is strongly suggested that they go. And, and they, and I think that they provide, you know, they have TVs and things there to, for them to do something while they're there.
Well, from a limited government standpoint, like, I feel like it's on the responsibility of the parent to know where sex offenders are and not take your kids trick-or-treating there. And we already have laws in place, even though, you know, the Georgia Republican Party and their campaign ads says that we don't. We have laws in place to make people aware, and like, I don't, no, I don't want to live next door to a convicted rapist, but I have the resources to look this up. So I'm conflicted on like the actual need for this, because two, you know, I'm sure it has happened in the past, which is what spawned all this, but the research in the articles that are being written indicates that there's not a spike in sex crimes on nights where kids are out.
Right.
Well, I mean, from a criminal standpoint, having the streets filled with droves of people that are all looking and stuff like that is not exactly the best time to pick out a victim.
Right.
The mayor of Grove Town announced that sex offenders who are on probation, approximately 25 to 30 individuals would be housed in the city chambers, or city council chambers on Halloween. I guess his Facebook posts originally said all sex offenders. Matt, I mean, if they're, the legality seems to change if they're on probation.
Well, again, though, is everyone who's on probation and on the sex offender list guilty of a violent sex crime? I mean, you can be, if you urinate in a national park or a state park, you can be put on the sex offender registry.
Oh, yeah, when you read the charges, exposed self in playground, and then he's like, well, it was 2:00 in the morning, I was walking home from a bar and had to pee and use the fence. But when you read it, yeah, it's like, my, this guy's sick.
Right.
Sure. I mean...
It wasn't 2:00 PM on a Saturday.
During the barbecue, the town barbecue, I mean, I'm not trying to like make light of sex crimes, but I have, I do have a huge problem with our sex offender registry as it is, which is why I have like been a vocal at, or opponent of domestic violence registries, because it's the same concept of, there's so many crimes. There's so many crimes that they, and they add to the list every year.
Right. Now, man, you know, sex crimes like that, especially involving kids, or where, like, y'all think I go sideways with public land? I get real bite of sorts when it comes to that.
Could they not just collect the sex offenders who have been charged with crimes against children? I mean, if, if, if this, I don't think I support that even then, but if that's what we're at, like, you know what I mean?
Well, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that anybody who has, like, when you're talking about legitimately committed a sex crime against a child, right? And I'm not talking about the 25-year-old guy that diddled the 16-year-old babysitter, right? That's not a sex crime against a child. I'm talking about a 30-year-old guy and a toddler, right? Like, he doesn't get out. And, like, that's a level of broken that cannot be fixed.
Well, and that's an interesting point, too. I mean, if you can't trust them out on Halloween, should they be out?
Right. Yeah, no, not at all.
Well, I've had the same argument with felons that are off probation and guns. Is if you were enough, safe enough to operate in a free society, you should have all the rights that are due a person in a free society. Now, if they're so dangerous that you can't have them in their house with kids on the street, yeah, they need to be locked up somewhere.
Right. I totally agree.
Yeah.
The only, the only problem, Matt, and this is, this is the argument, is when you make child molestation a capital or life, life in prison, you incentivize the offender to kill the victim.
Right.
Because the punishment's the same.
Hmm, that's an interesting perspective that I've not heard before.
Nah, don't even make it life in prison. Look, here's what they do. They just publicize when they're gonna drop the dude off at what intersection, and make note of the fact that 911 will be down for maintenance for 20 minutes.
I believe they call that taking out the trash.
Right. You know, a mini purge, if you will.
So, I mean, are you guys against this? I'm trying to make you say what you think.
You know, if they are on parole, they are still part of the penal system. So, from a legal standpoint...
Really, Matt?
You're four years old, Matt. You are a four-year-old.
It wasn't me, it was when Jessica snorted.
I didn't snort.
You snorted.
I didn't, I wasn't even laughing. You were hearing things because I was silent, and you literally just laughed at penal. Carry on, Dick.
This is so, this is so dumb. No, if you're still in the system as a parolee, you're still an inmate of sorts. So if they want to have you report, like the article says, if your PO could tell you to report anywhere, so if it's to City Hall, I don't, I think it's a waste of time, money, and effort to do it, just to give this mayor an opportunity to pound his chest and say how tough he is on crime and how good he is for kids. But legally speaking, you know, keep in mind, I'm a doctor, not a lawyer. I don't think that there's really anything anybody can do about it.
Right. I think it's a feel-good measure.
Well, and I feel like it's, like, am I against it? Probably from a government standpoint, I probably am. But, um, I feel like it's like the least of our worries, like, prioritaries-wise, like, things you're gonna fight back against. Like, this is at the bottom of that list.
Right.
So I'm against it, but, you know, carry on.
Right. This is stupid, but I'm not gonna fight you over it.
Well, it's one of those things that lawyers have a code, that everyone is due a defense, even, you know, people who are off... That everyone is due a defense, even, you know, people who are awful. So it, it, sex offenders are very hard to, to defend in any, in any, any stretch of the imagination outside of, you know, obviously Matt, the, the example of an 18-year-old boyfriend who had a picture of his 17-year-old girlfriend on the, on his phone, and that's child porn. Um, something like that, but ah, man, it's, 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 no, as a, as a freedom guide, no, I'm not for it. But you're right, I'm not gonna go grab my sandwich board and pick it outside of, uh, of City Hall.
Right.
Right. Well, I'm glad we agree.
We're on both sides of the issue, all of us?
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna straddle this then.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
I'm against it, but whatever. Not only a little bit against it.
Right. Kinda against it.
When, when we break every other part of the system, we'll address the sex offenders.
Right.
Governor Deal to call for a special legislative session.
Boo.
Uh, under the guise of hurricane aid, this emergency session will convene November 13th.
I'm so mad about this and I know you're more mad, so I'm gonna let you go first, but I'm really mad.
No, I'll, I'll suck the air out of the room on, on this one. But Matt, would you?
You like my theory, don't you?
I do, I do. Uh, yeah, what's, why don't you give us your theory on this one?
My theory on this one is that they, he called this and he did it now so that in the event that Abrams or, um, Riggs Amico wins their election, the legislature could go ahead and strip those offices of all their power.
Hmm. I mean, the thing is, is I, I, I think that's an interesting perspective. I do know that on the senate side, a lot of that is internal rules. And so they can do, you know, they can amend the senate rules without the governor. And I think that's going to happen whether it's Jeff Duncan or Sarah Riggs Amico, because the senators don't really like Jeff Duncan.
Well, budgetarily, yeah, we're, we're using, you know, emergency terms. Budgetarily, when you start took, looking at a state budget, 45 days is not is not crunch. There's nothing that can't be done with aid, nothing that can't, we, we can't do uh, in January or up till January, that we have to put in a bunch of rejected, retired, jilted, angry, bitter politicians giving them one more bite at the apple.
Well, and not only that, but the hurricane happened, um, what, three weeks ago? When this is, people are listening to this and it's still another two weeks from the hurricane, which just happens to be when they're all done campaigning and after the election. I mean, emergency is emergency. And to be quite honest, most of this is being handled by the federal government, which I will give them props. It's being handled rather well.
Well, and the internal Facebook groups and everybody else is, well, why are they doing this? Because the people of South Georgia need help now. Well, everybody's a small government person until it's time to do small government stuff.
Well, and then on top of that, what is the state government going to do? Are they going to go turn on people's power? I mean, are they going to hand deliver warm food? They, the realm of what is possible and what is going to help these people, I'm assuming through the holidays and things like that, is outside of the scope of the state government. And what's, what about our, our rainy day fund and, and our emergency funds that we've used to bail out offices like the insurance commissioner when Ralph Hudgens freaking bankrupted that office mid-budget year? I mean, we had money for that, but we can't just allocate funds on an emergency status for the things that are so urgent? I don't buy it. I don't buy it at all. Sorry.
And it, crises are used to push bad legislation. Uh, they're, they're gonna, they're given cover. It's gonna be right as we're approaching the holiday season. No one's gonna be paying attention and they're gonna start sneaking stuff through. There is no way in the world it's gonna be, let's get everybody together, let's get an aid package together for South Georgia, let's vote on it, passed, let's go home.
Well, I'm gonna be watching. I might even go. But it's terrifying. But I mean, because there's no parameters of what they can do.
Right. Once they're in session, they can do anything they want.
And this isn't a common thing. I think the last time they had a special session was in 2011. Um, but it's, I mean, this is not common and you know, honestly, I feel like Deals not, I am not, um, belittling or shrugging off what happened in southwest Georgia, but Deal has declared more states of emergency than probably any governor in history. I mean, the guy loves issuing a declaration and I just feel like with the storms that we've had in recent years, why wasn't there some sort of plan? And, and I'm, we're not even sure if there isn't a plan. I mean, Stacey Abrams came up with one in like an hour and a half. I feel like I feel like there is a plan in place and a way to help these people without calling the legislature into session.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's what Jima does, is handle emergencies.
That's because it's, it's not about the emergency.
Right. It gives you a warm and fuzzy to say, okay, well, that's why they're, they're, they're gonna go and take care of those poor farmers down in southwest Georgia. And like you said, once they start getting a committee, you're gonna see the, uh, the fuel bill go through. You'll see, you'll see other stuff that's being snuck through outside of normal legislative session. The best part of having a part-time legislature is you get 10 months that you don't have to look over your shoulder.
Well, and I'll say too, you know, what's even more terrifying is that during the legislative session, the emergency situation related bills that they do pass are horrifying. I mean, they infringe on people's rights. They give powers to people who have no business having power. Um, some of the ones that have gone through the Public Safety and Homeland Security Committees during regular session when an emergency isn't quote pending have been horrible. And so that, which is another reason I don't buy that we don't have plans in place because I've seen all the exceptions we make for when, when these things happen. But if, if that's what they try to do when they're trying to squeeze things through in 40 days, God only knows what they're gonna do in four or five.
Well, yeah, what they pull on sign die and uh, running the legislature till one o'clock in the morning to cram stuff through, because at that point, nobody's looking.
Well, and don't forget, a legislative day is just when they actually adjourn. It's not a calendar day like the rest of the world because we peasants keep time differently than our overlords.
Absolutely. It, this is the same, and, and of, and of course, this is a much different situation, but it's the same thing that we, how we got the Patriot Act. Is something bad happened? And then there's this feeling that we have to do something. So if both sides come together and agree, you know what? Screw the American people's rights.
Did, um, the Louisiana legislature convene after Katrina?
I have no idea. Uh, I was on the ground there. I, I didn't see the news.
I mean, a quick perusal of Google, which isn't always, um, you know, the most reliable, says that most every action was taken at the federal level. I mean, we have the USDA, we have um, the forestry, US Forestry Service that's helping. I mean, all these agencies are literally on the ground in Florida and Georgia now. Department of Agriculture, all of them. They're aware of the situation and they're doing, I get press releases every single day of things they're doing. Whether it be SNAP benefits or, you know, relief on power bills and, I mean, the private sector and the federal government are on this. The state of Georgia doesn't need to be.
Even if they are gonna do something, I don't know that it necessitates a special legislative session.
Right.
And if they were gonna do it, it's very easy. You get the, you get the committees that are necessary. You have them draw something up. You have the, the, a one-day legislative session and that's it. That's not what they're doing.
Nah, they're there to whittle away the power of the governor's office in the event that Abrams wins. Tell you that's what it's all about.
Well, that would not be the worst thing to happen because the power that, that dang legislature has given to the executive office is
No, I agree, but it's only, it's only gonna happen to all the neighbors.
Sure. Sure.
Right. It's, the what is great and I would like to see them do that anyway, but the how is the problem.
Right.
And you're right, Matt, it does give them a lot of political cover to go ahead and announce it before the election.
Yep.
And say, we were getting together anyway.
Right.
Ugh.
But yeah, to give Casey Kegel and Nathan Neal another bite at the apple, uh, it, it's, that's a great sound effect, Jessica. That's exactly what it is. It's, it's, it's nauseating. You know, it, he was rejected. 157 out of 159 counties, including his home county, said, pack up your stuff.
Ugh.
I told you I'd suck the air out of the room on that one.
Well, moving on to something as equally depressing.
Megyn Kelly's canned.
Oh.
And why?
So I've been, I just, I didn't, I don't have television, so I didn't see this when it first happened. But then I saw like a follow-up article and I was just intrigued by this. So this was my idea to talk about this. We all get like sued or lose followers or something. It's totally my fault, but I feel like it's really interesting because of the context and no one talks about context. So Dave, go ahead.
In the context, Meghan was saying, and there've been some, some starlets, I think the la- last, last one was one of the Real Housewives that wanted to go as Diana Ross. So she was accused of going in blackface by putting on some dark makeup because she wanted to go as Diana Ross. Um, I think Lohan got in trouble for going as Crazy Eyes from Orange of the New Black.
Did she?
I say in trouble. Um, but Meghan said it, that darkening, darkening your face if done respectfully is not racist. And for that, the social justice warriors got their, their pitchforks and torches out.
Well, and her quote, she had like a panel on the show and she said, but what is racist? Because you do get in trouble if you are a white person who puts on blackface on Halloween or a black person who puts on whiteface for Halloween. Back when I was a kid, that was okay, as long as you were dressing up as like a character. And while I'm sensitive to the subject, it's only being talked about the blackface aspect. And she said, I mean, she was talking about it in both capacities.
I don't know. See, I would, I, I have a real hard time because like I hate that everything that deals with race now is defined as racist. Because I have a very strict definition of racist that I use. And, and if, if, if it doesn't meet that definition, then it's not racist. It may be bigoted or you may just be a jerk. But look, even if you're white and put black paint all over you and go as a black person for Halloween, that ain't racist. It's, it's not.
So what is racist in your strict definition?
Is the inherent belief in the genetic superiority of one race over another.
I feel like you're reading that from a note card or something.
Nope.
It's a very concise definition though. I mean,
It's right. It is. But I think it has to be.
Well, we're a long way from the minstrel shows. Uh, I don't think
The what?
Minstrel shows where people would dress up in blackface and, and make fun and, and all that stuff. Uh, it, it was, it was a thing. And when I was a kid, 18 was a big thing. And, you know, I was always a bigger kid. I wanted to go as BA Baracus. So my mom said, okay, I can give you some of my jewelry and you will spike your hair. I said, I could use some of your makeup. She's like, no. And it, I didn't understand why. I wanted to dress up like my favorite character.
Will, will you dress up like him now? I got, I got a party we can go to next weekend or this weekend.
I would. And, and remember, it's only on Halloween that we get offended by this stuff. Jimmy Kimmel, back when he was funny, did a skit where he was Karl Malone. And he's standing there in a basketball jersey and he is head to toe in dark brown paint, uh, talking about aliens or something. I mean, Eddie Murphy, one of the funniest skits Eddie Murphy ever did on Saturday Live was him going in whiteface and getting, getting all done up and walking around as, as, that, you know, he walks into a, to a bodega and he's gonna pay for newspapers and the other white guy's like, no, take it, take it. Hilarious stuff. Uh, Richard Pryor has done it. Uh, so we, we do that stuff.
The Wayans Brothers did it.
Movies, Wayans Brothers.
Oh, yep.
And they culture, yeah, they culturally appropriated femaleness too.
Well, my problem with, um, the outrage over Megyn Kelly is she didn't do it. She was conducting a panel on the conversation and she offered her opinion and you know, I don't know. The, 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 um, I guess, I don't know if he's the CEO or what his position is, but some of the top officials, they forced her to apologize to everyone internally. And you know, they're all speaking out saying this is, it was demeaning and it wasn't right, but if we can't even talk about it, how are people gonna know it wasn't right?
Right. Man, I don't know. That's, I they'd had cause to fire me because they'd have been like, say you're sorry. I'd have been like, no.
Well, and what's amazing to me too is the opinion pieces that have come out. I mean, they're talking about things they, you know, she's, has a history of being racist because she said Jesus was a white man and so is Santa. And I mean, the, the internet is flooded with opinion pieces saying her apology wasn't sincere, which she was crying when she read her apology or choking back tears and, um, you know, she's had to hire an attorney and, I mean, I would hire an attorney too. It was $69 million was her contract. Like, I get it. But, I mean, is her career over?
Nah, she'll find something somewhere. I mean, she's hot and smart. Good God, that woman is brilliant.
Well, and so one of the opinion pieces I read, just to be, you know, fair and balanced, was I think on CNN and the guy was talking about how much he respected her in the 2016 election because, you know, how difficult and difficult times she had with Trump and how hard she was on him. And so I guess, like, I guess I'm frustrated that something like this can take someone down. I mean, if you can't apologize for wrongdoing and you still lose your job when you were just being the host of a conversation, I mean, even some of the people.
That's the thing though. That's, she shouldn't have apologized, man.
They made her.
That's, yeah, I know, but I'd have made them fire me then. They're like, no, I'm not gonna apologize. Because, because the minute you a- apologize, you're admitting wrongdoing. It's why like, even if you're guilty, you plead not guilty because a jury just like, I think they just have a hard time with a guy who maintains his innocence.
Well, and her apology said, you know, I want to begin with two words. I'm sorry. You may have heard yesterday, we had a conversation about political correctness and Halloween costumes. I defended the idea of blackface saying that as long as it was respectful and part of a Halloween costume, that it seemed okay. Well, I was wrong and I am sorry. This past year has been so painful for so many people of color. The country feels so divided and I have no wish to add to that pain and offense. I believe this is a time for more understanding, more love, more sensitivity and honor, and I want to be a part of that. Thank you for listening and helping me listen too.
Horse shit. Whatever happened to being funny?
Right.
Do you think you can make Blazing Saddles today?
No. God.
You can't even, you can't even make sa- make satire poking fun at racist people because no one would understand it. Look, she had an opinion that it's not racist. If someone else had an opinion that it is, that's what a discussion is. And if they can agree or, or not agree, And if they can agree or, or not agree, you know, this over, social justice war overreaction to everything that we do. Uh, Lohan, I think it was Lohan that, that dressed up as Crazy Eyes. She's not old enough to have remembered blackface. She has no frame of reference for that. So it's an innocence thing that I want to dress like this character. That's what this character looks like. Uh, when they made George C. Scott into Patton, they put him in makeup. If you want to look like somebody else, that's what you do.
Well, and it's Halloween and I posted the, an article about this on my, my personal page and you know, people were like livid that I even suggested that what she said, you know, in context may not have been as bad as if she didn't say it in a Halloween context. And, but then there were a few people who conceded that um, she shouldn't be fired over it, which I mean, you're in the news. You're on a TV show with commentary. Since when? Do, do they really think they're gonna lose viewers over this? Really?
And Robert Downey Jr. in Tropic Thunder. I mean, there's a long list of things that Hollywood does it and apparently when they do it, it's fine. Um, I tell you what, they, they turned on Kelly fast.
Well, I don't know, and I didn't know this until I started digging a little bit deeper, but apparently there's been a lot of tension with her and NBC anyway, because she's been a vocal um, critic of Matt Lauer and the sexual assault stuff and they, oh, some, there are some articles with sources who chose to comment on the condition of anonymity um, that were saying that, you know, she's been kind of on the outs with them. And so maybe this was their opportunity to, to push her out the door. I don't know. But you're right. I mean, it was Lester Holt was talking about it, all of the evening shows. They brought it up the next morning. They took her off the air as soon as she apologized, like for the rest of the week. And it's just, it's kind of hard to understand that this would be such a, again, in the industry, she didn't show up with it. She just talked about it.
Yeah, I, I don't relate. It's, it's not racist. It's, it's just not. I, even outside of the context of the conversation, it's not racist.
When I just really feel strongly that if we can't talk about these things, then we, of course, we're not gonna grow as a society and we're, we're not gonna progress. If, if it, I mean, I would want to know if people, this isn't a conversation that I've had with anybody before. I mean, I'm aware of it, but it's not something that I've had discourse about. I want to understand why people feel a certain way and why they feel it's offensive, but I shouldn't be in trouble or lose my job because I wanted to have a conversation about it.
Right.
You know, it's, it is, I know, three white people sitting around microphones talking about it. But
Right? Nah, I have point oh-four percent subs a hair.
Let me mansplain this to you. Now, I, I don't see how she said anything remotely racist. It, there is a difference between racism and relating to race. Uh, and we've, we have regressed in this country in the last, I would say fifteen years with the advent of identity politics. We're gonna draw a line because of, of the color of your skin and the people pushing it are the people who make the most hay out of that sunshine and that's the politicians.
Yes.
And the media is absolutely complicit in it.
Right.
Well, great.
I don't know. It's just stupid. The whole, I don't know. It's, that kind of stuff really irritates me.
It does. And you're gonna, you're gonna, and I know she's had some, some off-air stuff with, with her employer and there's other things going on, but this apology tour, uh, I'm, you, she's a lawyer. She may have written it, but that's, I, I don't know if those tears were actually were uh, uh, her being sorry or that's her regret for getting, for uh, for getting caught. I say getting caught. I,
I know what you mean.
Yeah, I know. I know. I've, you know, this English language is new to me.
But you know, like, when I was in middle school and high school, we, we, our family watched Fox News at home and I would, we would watch Hannity and Combs. And do you remember how much they would fight? I mean, they would be yelling at each other across that table.
Right.
And people loved it and they still were friends. And now we have echo chamber stations. We have echo chamber forums. We have groups that turn off comments. I mean, the entire society is just going to hell in a handbasket because we can't even talk. We can't even, we can't even fight and then move on. We fight and then we distance ourselves and cut ourselves off from people.
Well, Combs widow is Crowley? Is that right? It's, his, his widow is Republican.
Right. Yes, yes.
Uh, they didn't talk about politics at the dinner table. They talked about how was your day?
Right.
Normal human being stuff. Uh, that you, that you can talk about everything else but, but the politics of it. But yeah, you know, Jessica, on your point of, we've got Facebook groups that are calling themselves uh, information sites that edit comments, shut down commentary after putting out false narratives. Now, part of it is handing over the keys to those with limited intellect. But it's, it's scary out there because no one can tolerate a dissenting opinion.
No, and we, like I said, we used to thrive on watching discourse and learning from people with opposing views and now we just hate them.
Right. I don't, man, it's
Personally.
Right.
Yeah, they, they're the devil.
Mum- mama said you was a devil. Stomped all over the social justice warriors and Deal and Cagle. Closing thoughts.
Matt?
I got nothing, man. I um, vote for amendment one. Vote no on everything else.
I was right on the outline, wasn't I, Jessica?
Yes. I honestly, you were so right on it that I couldn't remember if I wrote it or if you wrote it. Just so our listeners know, we have an outline every week and this week for Matt's closing thoughts, it says public land, blah, blah, blah. And when I opened it up this evening, I was like, did I write that? Because that's what I think.
Jessica?
Amendment one. It's not a new tax.
Okay.
It's not an additional tax.
It's also a two plus.
It's actually taking control.
No, it's not. Don't lie.
Of the money out of the government.
No, it's not. It says up to eighty percent. They are not obligated to do anything. They just can't.
No, no, no. But the forty percent, that's right out of their hands. They don't get it anymore.
Oh, wow. So we're going to amend the constitution for a lackluster amendment. Come back when it's a hundred percent and I will be behind you. I'll, I'll even wear a sign.
I, I agree. It should be a hundred percent. But I'll take what I can get.
Alright, well.
I, I'm not an all or none person.
You'll take, you'll take the field goal if you can't get the touchdown.
You're, you're an anarchist. You are absolutely supposed to be an all or nothing guy.
I, you know what?
And it's supposed to err on the side of nothing. You get nothing.
I'm a nihilist. I believe in nothing.
Well, the problem is, it's like I said, you know, philosophically, that's where I'm at. Um, but I know that ain't ever gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
So, now, I do believe we should strive to that.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Well, maybe, maybe after the special session, they'll do it.
Right.
So Matt, what you're describing is Plato's ideal plane?
I didn't read I'm, I'm gonna need you to explain it to me and then I'll comment.
The idea being if everything were perfect, that's what you would want is, is anarchy. The, is the imaginary perfect plane where every, everybody does their own thing. Everybody takes care of themselves i- i- in, in your ideal plane.
Right.
So you have to keep one foot in the, in the ideal plane and one foot in reality.
Correct.
So, since we're talking about closing thoughts and amendments, I just want to remind people that no matter what the commercials that come out on TV say, Marcy's law is a terrible idea. It's absolute crap and it's going to screw you and your state. So don't vote for it. Vote no. And don't be swayed by Kelsey Grammer and his sad stories that didn't happen in Georgia. And continue to do research. Um, we were talking about an article that we will actually put on our page. Um, and it's about Marcy's law where a trooper was involved in um, I guess, a, a shooting. He shot a man twice and when the report was released to the public, they redacted the trooper's identity and the name and his age of service. And so therefore the media couldn't get any information on it. And it's because he invoked Marcy's law. And the trooper is um, claiming victim status because victim is not defined in the amendment and it's not um, defined in the constitution either. So, you know, well,
Well, they said that, they said that the guy attacked the trooper first and that's why he shot him.
Sure.
So because he was attacked, that, that's what uh, has given him the ability to claim victim status.
Right, but is that appropriate? Is that, I mean, victim status is not.
No, when you're an agent of the government and you shoot somebody, your freaking name gets released and that's all there is to it.
So, so this is privacy provisions. Um, and I, I just, I can't, I can't stress enough, like you could have never foreseen something like this happening or a situation like this, but it circumvents the entire process and, no, I don't believe that officers should be blasted for, you know, a single slip up in training fifteen years ago, but like Matt said, when, when something like this happens, um, we, the public and the media have a right to know who it involved first and foremost. And what does that mean for the entire process of the court? Is it gonna be closed court? I mean, the trickle-down problems of Marcy's law from start to finish are just abysmal. So vote no.
Hey, Frazier, get back in your box.
Go back to being a TV psychiatrist.
You know, and I, I don't dislike Kelsey Grammer and I, and I've liked his work and, and all that stuff and, you know, the, the stories that we hear are heart-wrenching. That one and uh, there's, there's another one that, that I saw recently that is just awful and, and look, that those people have suffered and they absolutely are due every protection under the law, under the law. And the people who wronged them should pay the price for what they did.
Under the law.
Under the law. But you know, when you use words in a constitutional amendment like alleged, I have a big problem. And I, and we, we discussed before, amending the constitution should be done very carefully and with much thought.
I mean, I feel like the, the first ten amendments of the US Constitution are pretty darn clear. I mean, we know, we have people who have them subject to interpretation and the courts have evolved over the years and because of fascism, but in reality, it's very clear what the intentions were. The intentions aren't clear. If you have to have campaign ads with people on TV who have, you know, deformities and sob stories and horrible things happen to them to sell it because it's not that clear, it's not, it shouldn't be in the constitution.
See, I don't, man, I don't know. We, we, speaking about it on a national level, like I think, I swear, I think if, if Jefferson rolled up in here right now, he'd take one look at this and be like, man, y'all really haven't changed this all that much. Why?
See, I, I don't, I think Jefferson would be, would be shocked at the, at the lack of personal freedom and the license.
Oh, no, I agree with that. But he, he advocated for rewriting the constitution every generation.
Well, y- and he also would be shocked that we haven't revolted again.
Oh, yeah.
Alright.
We were shooting people over three percent tax on tea. What the hell is the matter with you people?
How's that gas tax working out for you?
Right?
My closing thought is Publix, please bring back the senior citizen discount day. Please contain the retirees to one day. I was in the store Sunday, just trying to pick up, pick up a, a ten items. And it was like a driver's course of trying to get, road rage, hell, I got aisle rage. And, and, and I, I saw a man be healed in front of me when he got out, out of the wheelchair and stood in front of the salad dressing, reading each label for ten minutes. And, and I just don't have it in me to knock him out of the way or whatever. I just have to go to another aisle and come back. But please, take Wednesday. They can have Wednesday.
They can have Wednesday. And with that, we remind
We're out.
We tell you to vote early and vote often.
See you all next week.
Later.